Spent it to council in September at a public meeting in chambers. This did result in, in addition to the hotel being, about half the hotel being four stories, it did result in some of these beings, these buildings being four stories. It was always at two and then three on the, on the perimeters. So as you go down Cataract or Acacia, and especially because you have on, you have historical homes here that are one, but mostly one stories. And we were also to pencil this out because a two-story, two-level podium is expensive than a one-level podium, even though we are saving money with this construction by putting it on slab. We had to bring this up in order to pencil it out, to make the pro forma work. We had to bring this up to 100 residential units. That was about the time that I think the RENA numbers were coming out in terms of what San Dimas was supposed to be providing in terms of long-term housing. So we didn't think it was too ludicrous to propose some additional residential units, even though that was not the initial stated intent of the project. But by doing this, we actually were able to preserve the amount of ground floor retail. We actually increased the retail because we thought, well, if we're going to propose more residential, there's no way we can reduce the hotel rooms, there's no way we should be, there's no way we should be reducing the commercial square footage. We still need to give those important components of the project. These were some of the renderings. In fact, I think I'm going to show you all the renderings that we had shared at that, at that meeting. This is Cataract with the train. There's the bridge and the train in the distance with, these are townhomes, two stories, set back about 15 feet, and then goes up to a third-story master bedroom. And then this is the four-story, three then transitioning to four-story, these flat condominiums. So these would be townhomes. By the way, all the residential we were proposing the whole time was for sale, and the majority of it was, were flats, you know, single-level, multi-story building. And then some, and then on the perimeter were townhomes, which would be two and three-story with stairs. And we've done some market research, there's a huge demand. Most, almost all the new, you know, infill housing you see are attached townhomes, which is great and it works out, but it sucks if you're aging in place and if you have mobility challenged. It sucks if, I'm sorry, I'm using a technical term. It's, it's not the best when you have kids, but there's a huge demand for, for single-level housing. So, so that's why the majority of our proposal was for that.
Question about the...
Yeah?
Have you specified roughly the square footage of the units to be sold and what price range they will be sold or offered at?
Square footage, I think we have in a later version.
We'll get to that later.
You have that? Okay.
George.
All right, George will provide that on square footage. Yeah. Mostly two and three bedrooms.
Two and three bedrooms.
Yeah.
If you could just go to the previous sketching for one second. It reminds me a lot of, of course, Clermont's Casa, I forget the name of the hotel.
425.
425. And, and that layout with, like you said, around the Lumley Theater. It's a beautiful community and beautiful area. One of the concerns there only being getting parking in that four-unit structure, I personally have driven through three times and had to go park like probably six blocks away and walk to Eureka for a burger. So I'm just concerned about, you know, how many parking structures you'll have in that half area now and, and what kind of traffic flow you expect, because it just seems like it would be a congestion issue and a parking issue.
Yeah, I mean, well, the, so the question was, oh, I guess you, the heat, can they hear him now? Okay. The question on parking, we'll have that comparative slide later, we'll show you the number of parking spaces in each of the plans. On this proposal, we had one level that was dedicated to the residential, and then one level that was dedicated to the commercial parking.
Mr. Tussay, just question or clarification. You mentioned RENA. It's my understanding that these are all market rate housing. None of this is intended to be affordable, is that correct?
That's correct.
Spaces through the city, full of trees and green space. And again, our site is right at the middle of where the parks, the public transportation, and the commercial core of the city all occur, right at the nexus of our project. So we're very, we're very thankful and we're very excited about what the possibilities are here for you. When we zoom in to the next level, you can see that the project is surrounded by a lot of different uses. There's a lot of single-family homes to the south and to the east. You saw that we were right in the middle of the commercial zone, kind of bridging a gap between the east and west side of, you know, the more modern commercial core to the west and the more traditional historic core to the east where we are now. And then we looked at where, where people, what people are looking into for the project. There'll be a lot of great views of people riding the metro line back and forth. As you're driving up and down Bonita, as you're coming up Cataract, you're going to see the project. It's going to be very visible, it's going to be an icon almost for the city of San Dimas. And then looking out from the project, we're also very lucky because we have these great views of the park and beautiful old mature trees, mature trees. And then we have views of mountains all the way across the top of the site and directly to Mount Baldy. I don't see the gentleman who was asking earlier, but, you know, hopefully when we have our project built and you're living down here, there's mountains all the way. So even if there's parts of the building that might extend and you might not see directly to a certain mountain, you have 180-degree views to look at to the north of the city. How people arrive here, you know, Bonita and Cataract are busy streets. They'll be driving around, encircling the site. A lot of pedestrians we're expecting, we're hoping, will continue walking over from the Frontier Village and the historic part of Main Street. We're hoping a lot of neighbors will walk up to, to use the project and to, to shop and have dinner. And of course, there's going to be a lot of connections to Pioneer Park, as Jerry was saying. Maybe you have a Little League game in the park and then you come up for ice cream afterwards. Or you have dinner and you take a stroll in the park. Lots of connections there. So I'm going to walk you through some diagrams of how we got to our current plan. And this one is taking all of those people who are coming to the site from all different directions and modes of transportation, and we're providing a very porous perimeter so you can walk in, in any of these blue arrows all the way around the site. From Bonita, from Acacia Street, we have lots of connections down from the public park that you can walk in through the buildings and, and come into the plaza, which is in the center of the project. And speaking of the plaza, that is the heart and the soul of this project. Initially, as Jerry shared, it was more of a square shape, which is, if you're familiar with One Colorado in Pasadena, it was more like that. But as the project has evolved, it's become a series of these rooms that we think are going to be more dynamic. Each space may have different energy, a different feel to it. There might be a pop jet fountain in the middle for kids to play in, there might be a stage in this one. And so you feel like you're walking kind of from outdoor room to outdoor room as you go. And if you are familiar with One Colorado, you can see that the 66-foot dimension here is very similar to what that space feels like if you've had dinner there before. Surrounding the plaza, we have a lot of the retail, and that's to activate the plaza, to bring people in. Will give you lots of shopping opportunities, dining opportunities at the food hall. And the great thing about this project is we're activating not only our own internal courtyard, but these retail spaces are accessible from all four sides of the building. So whether you're walking down Bonita, coming up from Cataract, there's ways that you can enter the project, there's people that are going to be walking on the sidewalk. It's not an inward-focused project, it's one that's looking out and activating the rest of the city as well. When you go above the plaza and you go above the retail, that's where a lot of our residential living spaces are located. We have a mix, as Jerry was explaining, of townhomes on the east and the west side, and then a mix of different types of flats. Condos, they might be live-work, they might be more loft-like, so there might be an array, a range of different living spaces that you can look into. And finally, we have this connection with the park. These housing units will have great courtyards that they will look into, and you can see that we're bringing the energy and the spirit of the park directly up into the courtyard through this public space over here and this public space over here. I think there have been questions in the past about if these are public or private courtyards, and it'll leave a mix. These spaces in the middle will likely be more private just for the residents to use, but these courtyards on either side, especially over here, will be great spaces that the public can walk through to get to the park without having to go to the street. So that brings us to our current plan. And I'm going to walk through the plan quickly for those of you who may not be familiar with it, and then we'll address some of the council's concerns that they had aired earlier. As you just saw, the center, the heart of the project is this Pioneer Plaza, right in the middle. And we have retail buildings along the north side, what we're calling laminated buildings, retail buildings along the south side. So the front face will face the plaza, the back face will have condos, residential units behind that. In the northwest corner is the Shade Hotel, and this lobby is designed to also be very public, a way that you can come into the project. We've moved all of the parking to enter off of Acacia Street. So as Jerry was sharing before, we used to have garage entrances that would come in on the east and on the west, but now all of the garage entrance will come in from Acacia Street. And then you can see in the southwest corner, a collection of townhomes. Across the rest of the south, we have our flats, our residential flats, and then another five townhomes on the east side. And again, the design of the townhomes is really to be respectful and to be the right scale that will match with the single-family homes that are across the street. One of the great features about this plan is we have maintained the heritage oak tree right where it is today. We were just out there this afternoon and walked past it. And that will, that will be a feature as you're coming in through the parking entrance, but also as you're walking down into Pioneer Park. I should note, driving by, you may not notice this, but the site does change in elevation by about 15 feet. It's highest up here in the northeast corner, and it's lowest down here in the southwest corner. So everything that you see here, kind of in this orangey tan color, we're calling the plaza level. And then over on the west side of the site, this is about 15 feet lower, this is kind of maybe the hotel level, the parking entrance level. And so we have a couple of grand, beautiful stairs that will be landscaped to help bring the public from the plaza level down to the park, or down to the parking entrance, or over to the hotel. In other areas where we're closer to grade, we certainly will be integrating ramps, so everything is accessible for people to walk through. In areas where we're trying to transition 15 vertical feet, that will probably be accomplished by using elevators. 15 feet is a very high distance to go if you're not completely able-bodied. So, oops. Going back to the, the feedback that we received from council and the city offices, maintain the heritage oak tree in place, provide the fire access lane on the property, not encroaching onto Pioneer Park, enhance the connections between the new project and Pioneer Park, reduce the building height, and redistribute the housing density across the project. So I'm just going to touch on those five items really quick with the plan again. So here, we've provided a fire access lane all the way across the south side of our property. None of that is encroaching onto Pioneer Park. As I mentioned, we've kept the heritage oak tree in place, and not only kept it, but I think that we've really turned it into an asset for the project. You could imagine maybe having picnics or family gatherings under that tree or around I'm going to bring you up to the roof plan and we can talk about building height. Do you have a question? Yes?
For night, is there, has lighting been considered for night and like lampposts and things like?
For the Pioneer Park or for the project as a whole?
For the park and the project itself.
For the project as a whole, it certainly would be a place where you can go out and walk and have dinner and, you know, it'd be a beautiful place in the evenings. I don't know that we would extend that into the park, but certainly as we have a lot more activity there, that park is going to be a lot more activated, I think, in the evenings as well.
Okay, thank you.
So addressing the, the building height and the residential density, we used to have, as Jerry was mentioning, the flex space and upper-level commercial space on these buildings here. That's now residential units on the top two floors. So both of these buildings are three stories, retail on the bottom floor, with residential on the two floors above. The townhomes on either sides are remaining as they had been designed similarly before with two stories, and they're popping up to three stories in certain places. And then finally, the residential building in the middle, we're stepping down to two stories at the edge of the park here. So again, here, right here, the bottom of the fire access lane, if you're familiar with Pioneer Park, is the boundary of the current park. Then set back 30 feet from that, we're going up to two stories. And then set back about another 30 feet, we go up to three floors. And then it's not until we're perpendicular, or parallel with the plaza, at the farthest north portion of this building that we go up to four stories. So we really want to respect the height of the park. And the great big old trees that are out there, these are still going to be towering over parts of these buildings here. And then I want to walk you through the parking level, because everyone wants to know how it works. And here, we're just under about 300 parking spaces. Again, this is a conceptual plan, so we know that there will be a division between residential parking and public parking, but we haven't figured all of that out yet, there's a few ways we could approach it. As I mentioned before, everyone will come in through this entrance here, and then we have our main, large, subterranean parking garage below the plaza. The hotel will have its own separate parking garage. The levels don't quite work to connect these two. And Mike and Larry can explain if you have questions about how that will serve their hotel. On this level as well, you see the bottom of the heritage oak tree and the first level of the townhomes on the southwest corner. Yeah?
Is the parking going to be free or is it also going to incur a...
I just design it, but, I don't know the answer to that question. Yeah.
I have a question.
I'll deal with it when I, when I get up again.
He's got a pass for you.
I'll walk, that's fine, but it's just, it was a curiosity because with the gold light coming in and, but there's some concerns with parking with that, it would be a shame if people are just parking there to get onto the gold light and some of that.
Right.
However, I lived in Pasadena and I really don't like paying for my parking, so it's just a curiosity of what that might was.
Yep.
Actually, I have two questions. The parking structure extends to what, street or...
Oh, so the edge of, this edge here, I'll go back to this plan, is right along this line right here.
So Cataract?
So it's up against Cataract, yep.
Okay, and my other question was, what's the square footage of the commercial residential units? Do you know that or...
What do you mean of the commercial, the ones above the commercial spaces?
Yes, are they combined unit or are they separate? Is there a...
Oh, they would be separate. I think I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah.
The ground floor would be commercial.
Right.
And that would be a completely separate space.
Right.
And then above might be live-work or loft-style residential units, but they would be completely separate.
Okay, all right. I am myself a commercial residential and I live upstairs.
Oh, yeah.
So I think it's a great way that they have gone this way, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
But this one...
And your commute is super easy.
Pardon me? Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh.
Hi. I have a question about where the restaurants will be with regard to the parking. I'm thinking in particular, having several friends that use walkers or cannot walk a great distance, being able to drop off next to the elevator, wherever that's going to be, restaurants, just a num, a limited number of steps from the elevator. Or otherwise, if there's street level, that they could be dropped off and on.
Yeah. For the parking, and again, these are conceptual, so it's great to get this feedback now about things that are important to you. This is the public connection from the parking garage, right in the middle. And code requires that all of the accessible ADA spaces are located immediately adjacent to that. So you would, you could park and come up right there, and then when you go up to the plaza level, right now, the vision for this is that it's kind of a, a large food hall sort of space with a lot of different food stalls you could choose from. The hotel will be running and maintaining a restaurant here at the plaza level as well. And then some of these other retail spaces, we're not exactly sure yet what they may be, but there's a very good chance that some of them will be restaurants as well. And if anyone from the development team wants to, I'm overstepping my...
I want to throw out one thing because it introduces a theme. You know, I was, we were just out there an hour and a half ago and witnessed a perfectly functioning, well, perfectly functioning Bonita Boulevard with one lane of traffic in both directions. As you know, it becomes one lane in the historic downtown. So one thing we have mentioned to city staff, this is, needs to be studied with traffic engineering and anything else, is whether or not that one, going down to one lane can start at Acacia or earlier so that we could actually get some on-street parking or on-street convenience, that's a perfect spot to drop off and to unload your kids or your family who have walkers or wheelchairs for... Now, the hotel does have a drop-off, so that little tan driveway there is a drop-off and a valet drop-off for the hotel. So that can certainly be used by anyone in the project to, to drop someone off. But we'd like, I don't know, we'd be interested in feedback on whether or not we think, you know, Bonita actually could be, could be one-laned at this point. We think it'd be better for the project, and it's better for traffic calming too. Like, we want, we want this project to feel like an extension of the downtown and part of the downtown, not a separate project from the downtown. So having on-street parking and calming and slowing down that traffic is one way of doing that.
Thanks, Jerry. Yep.
Good question. As far as the residential versus, and hotel versus retail, what is the percentage? Like, say, is it going to be 60, 40, 70, 30?
We, we have a slide for that towards the end. I'm not, off the top of my head, I'm not sure what the percentages are, but we can give you all of the areas at the end of the presentation.
And kind of like also capacity, like, so how many, I would say, maximum residents versus maximum capacity of patrons? So, like, it...
Oh, okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
I think that's something that we'll be studying as we... I think that's something that we'll be studying as we go as well. That will depend on ultimately how many units we end up with, how big the hotel, how many rooms the hotel ends up with ultimately. So that will all depend on the ultimate area that we end with.
Because it is a fine line because, you know, we've been wanting more retail and nightlife space, but it's like you're, you're putting a lot more residents in here as well, so along with a hotel.
Yep.
Which them alone could take up a lot of space, so...
Yeah, and if, if it's parking and things you're referring to...
No, it's not about parking.
Oh, just, just the overall capacity.
Yeah, like, you know, I mean, I don't, I know it's hard to get people to come to retail establishments, but I still don't want to have like a two-hour wait for a restaurant, you know?
Right.
So that's, that's... Yeah.
Yeah. Again, these are the guys to talk to tonight, you know? VIP cards, right here.
You know, maybe Michael can remind us of our 2019 when you guys, the organization came and presented this. How many residence, residential places were you proposing at that time? And then how many hotel rooms were you proposing? And then were there multiple layers of floors, three and four, in that original presentation? Could you go ahead and remind us of that, please?
Why don't we jump to that?
Sure, we can. Yes.
Or Jim, if you can...
Sure, we can go to the, we have a few slides for this. And these are just images of, we can go back to them, of what the project might look like.
There we go.
Here we are.
Sorry, should maybe on this one?
Sure, we can start with the areas. So 2019, where we were, 2021, and where we are today. So to your question about all of the areas, the total project area is about 215,000 square feet. In 2021, we were at 227, and in 2019, we were at 135. So then you can see the areas that we have for ground floor commercial. So again, this has come down since '21. Upper-level flex, that has changed into residential, which is why it says nothing for '22. The hotel was at 32, then 37, and now it's at 62, about 68 rooms. And the residential went from 60 to 140 to 128. The total number of living spaces that we have at the moment is 97, about 97. Hotel rooms, 68, and the parking spaces are 298.
Is that shared with the residence?
The parking, that's the full parking count. So from that number, we would split that between the residential area, the hotel area, and the retail area.
Potentially, if you have 100 residential, you had someone just saying one residence, two cars, you've got 200 residential cars?
Mm-hmm.
And then only 98 parking spaces for others? I mean, that's really lopsided.
Right, so we're also working with the city as far as the parking requirements. And parking requirements are not two cars per one apartment. I forget what they are off the top of my head, but I want to say it's 1,000 square feet and under is one space.
It's one space per unit for one bedroom and then two spaces per unit for two bedrooms and three bedrooms.
Oh.
No, I just said that, like Jed was saying, we've been coordinated with Henry and with Marco at the city and to craft a parking standard that fits both, you know, a TOD, quote-unquote, Transit-Oriented Development Standard, similar to what's across the line. And we've arrived, again, in coordination with the city, for the residential, it would be one per unit for the one-bedroom and two per unit for the two- and three-bedroom. So it, I, again, depends on where we end up in that, in that range of, you know, how many one-bedrooms we're going to have and how many, well, I should say, the townhomes on the Acacia side, for example, those are going to be independently parked. So, for example, that would be 20 units, so that would be 40, I'm sorry, 10 units. So then 20 of those parking spaces would be self-parked, so you can also just like extract those from that, from the garage. So again, there's a lot of nuances to how we're, you know, how we're trying to park this, but that's been, you know, one of the salient points.
Just looking at this, it really feels like it's more of a housing project than a retail project. Like, incredibly.
Can you repeat that, please?
It looks more like a housing project than a retail project. Okay? There's, it's quite unbalanced.
We'll address that question when we go through the, through the renderings that are at the end of the presentation. And I think that you'll, you'll see that it reflects a mixed-use project that has the feel of primarily a residential project, which it is.
Yes.
But that it has an integration of retail, because to combine your question on the parking, the most important thing about this project is its location, is that it's close to a transit station. And what we want to do in the marketing, which George Penner will address, is going to be for people who want to live next to transit and perhaps give up a car and be able to save $10,000 a year.
I could be mistaken, but I'm sorry. Go ahead.
And so that's what we will be looking for. We may also study and work with the city staff on what's called unbundling the parking. So if you come to us and say, "I want to buy a condominium and I want to get rid of my car and I shouldn't have to pay for a parking space," and we will accommodate that sort of an arrangement. So we want to incentivize people that will live here, that will use public transit. We don't want to create a project that's going to contribute to parking issues, traffic issues, and further air pollution.
Okay, but my understanding is, is that San Dimas and San Dimas residents wanted more retail and nightlife. And I was on a community meeting and filled out surveys, and that is what the people said of San Dimas, what they wanted. And we weren't opposed to residential building, but it wasn't supposed to be the focus. And it, and you just said yourself, residential is the primary with some retail, when it was supposed to be retail with some residential. It's completely the opposite.
Yeah, I don't understand what you mean by the supposedly, but, but what we have is we have hospitality, which is very important to the, to the city.
Very.
You know, because it's a big tax generator, okay? Then there's quite a bit of restaurant, food hall, bookstore, and the like.
This project does not resemble what we were told. And I think everybody else here, am I wrong? Do you see this? Okay. This is not what we wanted.
Well, okay, that's your opinion, but I think, why don't we hold our judgment until we finish the presentation?
That's fair.
And then you'll see, then you'll see the renderings at the, at the end. Okay, are we ready to go into the next slide?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, you handle that. Okay. So, so these are the images of what the project will look and feel like. And the purpose of this slide is that there's, because of the grade differential, there are stairs. And so what we're showing you is some, how beautiful stairs can be when you're dealing with grade differences. And, and these are examples of that, how beautiful it can look with stairs. So this is how the retail will be positioned on the site. Beautiful spaces, a lot of outdoor, several hundred seats of outdoor dining. Jerry will, will be doing the food hall that will have, how many, how many food probably, Jerry?
Eight.
Eight different vendors inside the food hall and have this type of feel. You asked about the lighting a little bit earlier. We'll probably have decorative lighting, like what you see here. This is One Colorado, again, where we modeled this project after it. And then you see, you know, this is upstairs restaurant here, and we'll have that type of a look for the retail and the residential. Here, I think I want to call on you, Michael. I want you to hear from Michael Zisselis about what he has done with hospitality, for example, in Manhattan Beach, where it's kind of become the living room of the community. And that's where people come for their birthday parties, their wedding receptions and the like. And he has a special connection with the community and he's kind of the go-to guy there.
Thank you. No problem. Thanks, everybody, for having me here tonight. I was looking at the one slide and it showed that the hotel grew in size. It didn't really grow in size. I wasn't doing the first hotel. It was like a motel something. So they came to me and said, "What do you need to make something successful in your town and the community?" So I came out here, I'd been here before, five years ago, and I was glad that we get to be part of this again. But to really do a boutique hotel, it has to have a lot of amenities. And it's got to have, the rooms aren't as big as you think, but you need balconies, you need roof decks, you need conference rooms. And they're not big conference rooms. I'd say the conference room's a half the size of this room, but you need to have that, if somebody wants to have a business meeting and then they're going to stay... And the last thing, just, the towns want hotels because of the TOT tax, you guys. I paid the city of Manhattan Beach over a million dollars a year off 38 rooms in Manhattan Beach. I have 60 rooms in Redondo Beach. I'm paying $1.4 million in tax. That pays for the schools and the services and all the things we need to keep our communities great. But, you know, the way the project actually evolved a lot, not from city comment, but was just kind of, the hotel, to me, had to be, you know, I was involved in Metlocks. And if you don't know Metlocks, you guys, it's in Manhattan Beach and you should all go there. It's an incredible, it was a toxic superfund waste site of pottery that had lead in the ground and the city, in their wisdom, I don't want to use those terms too often, but a city, in their wisdom, dug down two stories to get rid of all the lead, put in parking, and then leased the deck to us. And we built an incredible hotel, farmer's market, outdoor dining with trees, and retail. And the retail space that you see here, you know, retail, you know, if you talk to a lot of people, and I shouldn't be speaking about retail because I'm a hotel guy, but I do own restaurants as well, you know, retail's a hard business right now. You know, you're competing with the Amazons of the world and people are going online to do all their purchasing. So I think this retail component size is actually perfect for your community. I don't think it's too big or too small. I think it's right on and, and it's just something that you guys have to decide if this is what you want. But I think the project is brilliant, the way it's been put together and the way it connects to the park behind us. And when I did walk the site a few times, when you stand at the park, the only thing that really blocks your view of the mountain is that bridge right now. But progress, guys, progress. So that's what I got on the hotel. But you'll love it, so. And you guys, go to, you know, read TripAdvisor, read Yelp, read about our hotel, you guys. Conde Nast Top 100 Hotels in the World. It's just a beautiful brand, something you'd be proud of in your community. Yes, ma'am?
What I just saw looks like the hotel of the Juneau, you know?
Well, I kind of, I'd like to, I'd like to say that this whole Pioneer Square is like you take a dropper and you drop the water and it becomes the, kind of the center of the community. And that's how I see this. So I see this as just, but there's economics involved, everybody. Like, why is the hotel 68 rooms? Well, that's where, that's where these things pencil to be more profitable. Very good for the city, but also you have the same front desk agents, the same managers for 30 rooms as you do for 75. And there's a number, like 75 is the number where it doesn't become boutique anymore. But at 75, it's a boutique hotel. You know everybody's name when they come in, you know your guest's name, you treat them that way. But when you get to a Las Vegas-type hotel, nobody knows who's who, you know? Any other questions?
Yeah, I want to make, just make it clear, I love the hotel. That's, that's what I was saying. But it's the townhomes and it, and the residential, like, that seems overbuilt. Like, we don't, we do need more retail, we really do. And the hotel's great, and you're going to bring people into that beautiful boutique hotel. But as far as where the parking is, and I don't even know how the parking's going to go versus the city using the parking and then the residents own the parking, so they're going to be going and wrapping around, going around and saying, "This is, you know, belongs to this unit, this unit, this unit, this unit." So basically, it's, it's not going to be random. They'll be assigned to those units.
There'll be, I would assume, just because I have the hotel in Manhattan Beach with underground parking and we have, you know, a arm that comes down so you, the guests can check into that. Here, we actually separated it, not because I wanted to, just because of the elevation differences.
Oh.
But there will be a separation between the residents and the retail.
Then you should know how many parking spaces belong to the public, right?
Well, they belong to the public that's visiting the center.
Right, so do you know the number of that?
No, I only know the hotel. I'm the hotel guy.
Oh, you're just the hotel guy?
I'm just the hotel guy.
Right.
I know a lot about hotels and restaurants, nothing about parking.
Yeah.
Okay, is that, is there any more on the hospitality component?
So having been born and raised in Torrance and working at Mattel over in El Segundo, I'm very familiar with the Shade Hotels. They're fantastic. So I have a lot of confidence in you. One thing that I will say is that Redondo Beach typically has a lot of parking structures around in the area, public parking structures. So that is something that would be different compared to what we have here, where there's more residential parking versus the structures that they have more down by the beach. So just something to keep in mind as this is all being played out.
You got one more right here?
One more, right over here.
Thank you very much for your presentation on the hotel. I actually had a question about occupancy rates and the rates you're going to charge and where your guests are projected to come from. And so when I look at CASA 425, I know that a majority of the guests are associated with the colleges. There isn't a college in San Dimas. There aren't any major businesses in San Dimas. And so I just kind of wondered if you could articulate where you see guests coming from? If they would be mostly business guests or if they would be...
No, it's, actually, that's another reason why the number's up to 68, because it's the weekends that we're going to be the busiest. This is not a, you know, commercial, mid-week type of hotel thing. But we'll do business things and we'll go out and get people to do that. But this same conversation was had for that la, the hotel you just mentioned. When we were building that, nobody believed it would work. So we're, you know, the Metlocks was done, is done CASA 425 and Metlocks are kind of the same, the same group we're all in.
I understand, I'm not doubting your projections. I'm just wondering if you could articulate what you...
Well, you know, I'd like to say that I have years of studies, but I've always done things gutturally. You know, I mean, when I see a site and I, everything I've done in my career, I have two hotels and 20-something restaurants. And, you know, as far as the rate goes, I've always saw this, this is not going to be a Manhattan Beach rate of $400 a night, this is going to be $195 a night. The question is, do you want to stay at a Holiday Inn Express for $120 or do you want to splurge and go 195? And it also becomes an extension of everybody here's living room in the community. You really, sometimes you just don't want your in-laws staying with you. So you book them into the Shade Hotel, it's perfect. So it's really a community hotel. But for weddings and for bar mitzvahs and for quincegas and all these great events, there's nothing like that out here, you guys. There's no place you can have that event in your town right now. So this will be the place where you can have the big fundraisers for the school, the charity events when they're needed. It just becomes the community center.
Thank you.
And let me just add to that, when you said that there's no school here. You know, we're five minutes from Cal Poly Pomona. There's Citrus College, there's Azusa Pacific, Claremont is under-hotelled because we did talk to Four Sisters. They're over-capacity and they'll probably send people our way down here. You have raging waters here and you're going to see, with the build-out of the Lanterman Hospital site, you're going to see major businesses coming in there that are going to have a need for a book... to see major businesses coming in there that are going to have a need for a book, this type of high-end hotel.
I'm just going to add for the public's benefit, there is a school in town, like Pacific University, which is formally recognized as a university from a college. In addition, we see 80% occupancy of our hotels generally. And a lot of those hotels, as he talked about, the transit occupancy tax, where we hover at 80% is largely around things that happen at the universities, yes, but Fairplex as well. So we have NRA, we have Hot Rod, we have all kinds of things. So we really do, and we also have some rather large corporations that are in town that may not be front street for you to see. But if you drive down Covina and you look at some of those businesses that are there, they frequently have visitors from out of town. So I think, I think there's good opportunity for a hotel.
And I'll just add to that, that people want the boutique experience now. So, you know, times have changed, you know? Kids are watching social media and doing things like that. But people that travel now, that get to stay in a boutique, will only stay in a boutique now. They don't want the big tower, they don't want the non-personality, they want something with a little bit more soul and personalized.
I do think as well that the conference rooms are a really big attractor for out-of-the-area business people. And being, you know, working in the Orange County area, the conference centers really do fill up hotels. And it's hard to think that somebody from out of the area would pick San Dimas out of all places to come and have their conferences. But, you know, in addition to all of the amenities that we have in the city just as a whole, you have a airport right nearby that's not LAX. So the nightmare of flying into LAX that these business people might be used to, Ontario Airport is, you know, it's on the grow and it's, they're even doing more advertising push to capture the market on the business travelers. And we really aren't too far away. So I think that is a really fantastic opportunity with, you know, integrating conference centers into it as well.
You know, I just want to add, having received unbelievable amount of input from people calling over the weekend and calling the last, you know, today and everything, I don't think anybody's complaining about the hotel. Most people think this is a great idea. Where they're having problems is the residential thing going from 40 to now to 97. And that's what they're looking at. They did, as one lady said, nobody saw this as being a huge residential project, they saw it being a downtown center and creating that synergy. Somebody, one person that's sitting in the room, when we had long conversation, the first thing he said is, hey, I believe we ought to be doing this and I want to make sure that we have a bar that we can go sit down and have a drink with my wife or my friends. And he said, it must have a bar. And then when you guys came in and talked about, you know, a rooftop bar over the, over the hotel, I mean, that sparked people's interest. But it seems to deflate people when we start talking it being a big residential project. And I just believe that when you start talking two, or not two, but three and four stories, and then the man asks about the park, being able to see from the park. Okay, well, you now got this four-story building and I realize it's hard to vision and then we have the bridge. And I mean, I just find it hard to believe that we're going to get any kind of a decent view of the mountains from the park. You know, that's just my own, you know, question.
Okay, let's talk residential and then we'll get into, why don't we put the slides up? Oh, I'm sorry.
I think that one of the important things, as someone who's had a business downtown for 30 years, I can count 16 different countries that have come through my store. Are they coming to San Dimas? Well, they're coming to San Dimas because of the downtown and they're coming because the old Ford card guy. Most of the traffic that we get that is out of town happens to be actually out of the country. And they're staying other places because our hotels are full. If we put a project like this there, which I think you've done an amazing job, I think the project is amazing, it's what we need to move forward as people in San Dimas, that we have a beautiful ability to be a small version of Pasadena, a small version of Claremont, a small version of, well, probably not downtown Glendora anymore, but I grew up there. But anyway, this is what we need. And in order to attract international people who probably will look at $195 a night as nothing because of what you're giving them for the value and the walk-around look, I think it's absolutely fantastic and I think it's really going to be something that's going to benefit us and move us into the next phase as we move into the city and will attract the money that we need for taxes that everybody seems to want to upgrade the city. The taxes have to come from somewhere. They don't, you know, they're not just going to fly with the budget we have now. So I support you 100%. I think what you've done is fantastic and I think it's going to completely benefit the city and I thank you for it.
And we are not related. But I do want to say, the term, the term here that we all have to understand is mixed use. So we, I think we've, you know, done a good hybrid of hotels, retail, residential. It's a mixed-use project.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Michael. Okay, now we're going to take a closer look at the residential, but, you know, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to answer your question very directly. This project has a large hospitality component and a rather substantial retail component, okay? Those are very, very difficult to finance, both of them. And the way to pay for the hospitality and the retail is the residential. The residential drives the financeability of this project. We, we have to, we have to understand that in order to finance this project, it has to have the mix of what we're proposing here tonight. And that's, that's, I would just, we would just be fooling you to be talking any other way than what the ratios would be because it's not financeable. Okay? And we, as a responsible town builders, we have to be very candid with you and that's our answer. It is what it is. And what I want to show you is how you can do a density at this type of level in a very, very attractive way and that will be well-received in the marketplace. Because we've done it all over...
About the residential, what's the difference when you say residential and townhouses? How are they going to differ from each other?
Well, residential means that there's people living there, of course. And what we're offering here is multiple types of living spaces. There's townhouses, there's flats, there's going to be kind of artist loft-type units on the Bonita side, similar to, can we show the Mission Meridian slide here? Well, yeah, you can just leave it here. So here's the corner of Bonita and Cataract. And it's got, it's got all retail along Bonita, as you can see, it's all streetfront retail and up above our residential units. Those are sort of like, have an urban feel to them. There'll probably be something like a California loft with a higher ceiling. And those are very attractive in the marketplace. You know, we'll get a lot of young people with that. Then the townhomes that are along, note that we've bookended the site with low-scale, low-density residential. These are townhouses on the Cataract side, these have walk-ups, they're very friendly to the street and very welcoming. And then next to it, you see where we have the flats. And you see the steps coming down, it's a direct connection to the park from the plaza. And these step backs, so they have less of an impact on people that'll be using the skate park and then the rest of the park. Why don't we go through the, okay. Now, George, I think I'm going to, I'm going to ask you to talk about the residential. Again, this is George Penner, Deezee Penner Podley, and a very experienced...
Had her hand up quite some time.
I have a question.
I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So I'm hearing some of the responses and I was pretty, I think we met in person in the early outreach stages of PSQ. I'm going to be honest, I hate the Mediterranean style. And I actually had a question for the hotel. I understand that your main hotels are coming from the beach, so that's probably a very popular style there. I'm curious why, at least in the drafts here that we're seeing, the mock-up, is that the style that you're planning on going with or is that just to make it, to finish the thing, is that, you know, adjustable? Because I think that for me, as a resident that lived rather close to this area and I walked to the park all the time, that's the one thing that's just really sticking out for me is it just doesn't blend with the rest of the city. So if you take a look when you get off the freeway and they just build a new Popeyes, you know, not the biggest fan of fast food, but the city kept with the style of the craftsman style that goes all the way across. So when I'm looking at this, I'm seeing so many different styles in one plaza, but it's, the Mediterranean style just sticks out so badly. And I just feel like, I mean, I understand it makes the hotel look, I guess, modern, but I would love to see something more craftsman style. And I'm thinking Disney California, that resort is massively popular because of the craftsman style. People fly to DCA and stay at that resort for that feel. Rather than the other, you know, hotels that are in there, including hotels that are more Mediterranean style like this that are by the Disney Park, they will specifically pay hundreds to thousands of dollars a night to stay at that hotel for that very homey, woodsy feel. So for me, as a resident, that would be what I would be looking for. I'm not opposed to a hotel, not the biggest fan of it, but I can see where we're coming from, where it definitely kind of needed. And the conference rooms are definitely needed. But it's just the style of it that's not making sense. And now I'm also seeing some of these townhomes are also Mediterranean styles, that, what we're seeing here?
Well, what we're trying to do, this is a large site and you don't want a uniform look. We want this, after its age for a few years, we're going to want this to look like it's always been there. And so you need to change architectural styles. You can't have a monolithic style for the entire project. We have, we have, we're going to, we're going to show this to you in great detail, but we have Craftsman, green and green, we have some what's called Irving Gill, which was a kind of mid-century, a very attractive, one of the more famous California architects, that type style, and some Mediterranean. Those styles are indigenous to this area. And I understand, everybody has their preferences in architecture. Some people don't, oh, also, we have some mid-century. You know, the bookstore building is a takeoff of some mid-century. So, you know, again, remember, I started off by saying that these are conceptual, they're not final, they will be massaged and fine-tuned as we obviously go through all the planning and entitlement processes. So George Penner's going to talk to us a little bit about the residential.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. I guess the one thing I would say is that I'm not a part of the development team. I was hired by the development team to represent the residential component for sale and market those to individuals. And what I would say to you is that, as the principal of Deezee Penner Podley, and our closest office is right up on Route 66 in Glendora, we are very, very familiar with the marketplace and what consumers are looking for. And I would say a couple things. One, this is an extension of San Dimas. And San Dimas represents history and architecture and community and neighbors. And I guess I would say, and I'm not the one that comes up with the numbers, how many are built, but I would say this is a direct reflection of your community and an extension of your community. And one of the things that we have here is different products. We have one-bedroom and two-bedroom and three-bedroom and townhomes because there are so many different types of potential people that would want to reside here. And San Dimas currently really doesn't have a lot of this product. And I think that that's really important because as many communities age in population, they don't want to leave. They want to actually stay in San Dimas. They want to stay in some of these residential communities and they don't have the opportunity to. With the layouts for some of these smaller units, people have the ability to age in place in the communities that they love. Yes, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying there, but that, the insight with that was supposed, they were supposed to be lower income if that was the case. This is market value.
Affordable housing, yes. You know what, again, I'm not a part of the development team that determines the overall mix.
Understood. Yeah, so just to give you some feedback, we were, we've been in meetings where affordable housing was mentioned. This doesn't represent that. We also were told more retail with some housing, this doesn't represent that. This gentleman here said that the city basically can't afford this project if we don't put in all of these units. Is that correct? We cannot afford this project if we do not put in every single unit?
I think what Michael says is the feasibility for financing becomes more difficult.
Okay, but we can do it with less because what else I was told is that that's why we have the hotel, is that's helping fund the project, correct?
Yeah, I would say that, that's, I would say that's absolutely a fair statement.
Funds the city, that initially the city puts the money into the project.
Let me clarify for folks, the city is not contributing funds to this project. When they refer to financing, they refer to their internal development financing for the project.
Okay, so then when I'm said that we cannot afford the project if we do not put in all this residential, what does that mean? If we're not paying for it?
Yeah, let me, let me describe that. Let me describe the process. And thank you for putting us to the test here. What happens is we come up with the, with the development program, the architects design it, Orhe then takes it to the general contractors and they price it, and then we take it to Aaron Mendelson at RE/MAT. And it has to meet a certain threshold of return to take this risk on. And this is a high-risk project because it's of its mixed use and the quality in which we're designing and building it. You know, the hotel and the retail is high-risk and doesn't give the same return that the residential does. So we have to rob Peter to pay Paul, if you will, in order to give our investor the return which they need.
San Dimas is a residential community. I actually have to go outside of San Dimas to spend my money.
I just want to say one thing on this, the retail component, that I think is kind of interesting.
Does it say I'm not to have a good time?
Of course, right. And I'm not a retail expert, but one thing that's kind of interesting about this project is that it connects directly to the downtown district of San Dimas. And it's very analogous to South Pasadena. And South Pasadena, very similar in population size, also a city, a town that received the Gold Line train. And Michael Dedon and our agents at Deezee Penner Podley actually represented the sale of that project. The Mission Street Retail District in South Pasadena, prior to his development, was dead. There was nobody coming to that because there was no reason to, there was no destination. With Mission... no destination. With Mission Meridian, it re-energized that area, and it actually brought more people in and created a much livelier retail section further to the east, all the way to Fair Oaks. And so the, the, the actual advent of having that project, not only is it a mixed-use project where there is retail space at Mission Meridian, but for a half a mile to the east, it re-energized that entire place, not just him, but the Gold Line as well. So it is, it creates a unified sort of fabric of...
There's a commercial business that's supported though. There's a commercial business on there. So they do those houses down on the corner of the commercial business. I worked in that business for 10 years.
Right.
So you have all these businesses down in town that I want to actually live and work and have and do. And then that, that broad area, more support around them. I can read it.
Well, right. And it also builds community, and also builds neighborhoods, and it unifies the park.
And we'll help, so I just want to come back.
Right. And, and I think that this will not only create a very vibrant, lively, sort of epicenter for people to congregate, but I also think it will regenerate, re-sort of energize the immediate neighborhood around. Yes?
Okay, I just want to say, Michael, I've been involved in discussing this project with you and several of my neighbors since the very beginning. I think you guys do a phenomenal job, and you have continued to do a phenomenal job in really showing your, your overall care for this community, in that you're not just wanting to plop in a Fairfield Inn, which, if I can remind the room, which is what City Council originally was proposing be done here. We don't need that. Let me also remind the room that the city of San Dimas is responsible for coming up with some 1,200 living units over the next so many years. Sure, I'm not as super as excited to have 100 units as opposed to the 40 that was first being talked about a couple of years ago, but we have to continue to work together and find that happy medium. You're just talking about retail space. Well, if they build it, it will come, so to speak, right? You have something like this. We have several vacant retail stores in our already existing retail spots around here. So imagine having something like this. We're gonna have the potential for more businesses to fill in existing retail shops that are here and empty. So keep that in mind as you're beating these poor guys up, you know. And, and I would also say that I, I think from a design perspective, I just want to comment on this because our firm, we've been honored to, to represent over 50 multi-unit projects in Southern California. And one of the things that they have taken incredible great care, and I, and I commend the entire team to do this, is to create a diverse eclectic architectural foundation, which really does embrace Southern California architecture at every sort of stage of its history. But it also creates a diversity in the offering, just as you talked about, a mixture of different styles of architecture, because there are projects that look like giant, you know, blockhouses that are monolithic in nature and that are, you know, ugly for that matter. You've incorporated the park, public outdoor space, different architectural styles, and I really, I commend you for that because a lot of people would try to max it out with square footage. So I just wanted to say that. Any other questions on the... There was one more piece I forgot to say.
Please.
Maybe if you cut to the point and tell the room roughly what those units will sell for, and maybe it will put the people at ease of what that will do for their property values.
Right. Okay, so here's, here's the bottom line on housing in Southern California.
Wow.
That may have...
Is there a sheriff in the house?
There is an extreme shortage of housing in Southern California. In San Dimas alone, the days of supply of homes is one month. A normalized market in Southern California is nine months of inventory. That means that you can sell through the houses literally that are on the market in one month. And that shows a lot of different things. One, current homeowners are realizing considerable appreciation if they sell, but they don't have any place to go. So no one is selling a lot of times, and that's another reason why inventory is so low. There's no product like this in San Dimas. I'll, I'll get to you, I promise. Just hold on one second. There's no product like this. So you're opening up a, a new audience for yourselves, but also potentially new audiences as well. And I think that the mix that has been proposed of one, two, three, and townhomes for families really provides a very diverse offering. I can't tell you how much they're gonna sell for. It's, this project's three years out. The state of Califor, our Southern California saw something like 33% appreciation in the last year because of the housing shortage that currently exists. But what I will say, though, is, you know, people are talking about the parking and all. This project is very similar to the South Pasadena project, Mission Meridian, in which people really did get rid of one of their cars because they wanted public transportation. They don't want to have an extra car, they can't afford it. This is a great solution for them not to have that. And that absolutely was the case at Mission Meridian. So you have the opportunity for, you know, recent graduates who may be working remote and have to travel to their office once or twice a week, young families, maybe a, a child or two, or a more extensive family in some of the larger townhomes. And then you have a multi-generational piece where you have life changes. Unfortunately, there may be a passing, or there may be a divorce. This provides incredible housing for that. And as you grow in age, I'm getting up there where I'm thinking about downsizing, and this is a perfect opportunity. Yeah. You can certainly use mine.
Jared, do you want to point out?
Yeah, we got one. Then I'll get to you.
I would actually say that I actually agree with the mix of housing to commercial, and the reason why is based upon the comments about the hotel. So if the hotel is gonna mostly be a weekend hotel, and that's when you're gonna boost occupancy, you do need people here throughout the rest of the week to sustain those businesses, the restaurants, the bars, the bookstores, and everything else. And so if you do approach it that way, you create demand that's basically consistent throughout the week, then it makes a lot more sense. And so hearing, I think, the total presentation and the thought that went into it, I do think that the mix of housing sounds a lot more justified in order to make the project sustainable and successful for the long term. So thank you for articulating that.
Thank you.
And let me, I wanted to point something out. I think, can you go to the slide on the... So from the, we, we really haven't sacrificed the ground floor retail commercial for residential. If you see, our original proposal was 26,000 square feet. We're at 25,000 square feet. GSF is gross square feet. What we've, what we've really swapped out is that upper-floor commercial. And in two years of talking about this project with several of you and others in the community, like, like no one once has said, like, I'm really jazzed for that office space on the second floor, or that yoga studio that might go there. And I know, I know everyone here has been to the, the Claremont Village, right in the Lemley's Plaza. So raise your hands, how many people have gone to the dentist on the second floor above the retail? Nope? Or the day spa on the second floor? My point exactly. Imagine that development with upper-floor housing. You would interact it with it the same, it'd have the same amount of retail. And in that, I'm calling retail kind of true retail, like clothing stores or restaurants, the kind of stuff that I've heard from you all, you want here, not necessarily more dentists and hair salons. That's, that's the trade-off here, and, and just talking very frankly. Construction prices have gone up just in the last year 20%, probably since the start of doing this project two and a half years ago, something like 30%. Rents, apartment rents and residential sales have gone up practically 30% in the last year alone. Right. Retail rates have not gone up 30%. You know, retail is renting at just about, retail's probably worse than it was two and a half years ago when we started. We want to try to save the retail component of it. We thought hotels would be dead, and hotels have actually, like Michael's, have actually rebounded and are doing better now, the right hotels. And they've rebounded, but hotels are very, very cyclical. That's why Mike says they're risky businesses. He, I mean, you can do, like, the boutique hotel locally that we use as an example, can do 90-plus percent occupancy and $300 a room a night. I'm talking about the one in Claremont. And what happened in COVID, it was down to like 15% occupancy. So we're trying to save the retail component. We're trying to keep our promises and bring a high-quality boutique brand to the city, and this is how we figured out how to make it work. It's up to you guys if you feel that, you guys, you guys, it's up to you all, if you feel that that component of residential outweighs the other aspects of the project. And if that's your decision, then we'll respectfully work on other projects. I mean, we would love to be in the city and doing this project, but we have to make it pencil out. And not to cry poor developer, but it's the hardest time in 20 years to be a developer, other than in 2008 and '09 when the Great Recession happened, is right now because of the construction prices and all the craziness in the market. Ask anyone you know who's in construction, or is in development, or has anything to do with those trades. It's, it's crazy unpredictable time. So we feel that this is what we need to do to try to advance this project.
Can I ask you a question, Jared?
Yep.
And along the rates, along the residential piece.
What is, and as Mrs. Gonzalez reminded us, in 2017, '16, whatever, we were moving full speed ahead with a Fairfield Hotel. I get elected, we get out of an ENA, the mayor reconsideres, who's council at the time, the rest of the council comes along, we start this process, community members engage, Isabel Ebner and the rest of their crew get really active and raise a lot of awareness that we're not gonna want a big hotel. And we changed course on what we were doing to get where we're at today. I look at this project, and one point I have to agree with, with Nicole on is that, you know, a single-family loft or flat, or whatever the case may be, even in market rate, I would guess that's probably gonna be $500, $600,000. That's, that's probably ballpark what I would say that's gonna be, and with one parking space. That person's gonna, you know, hopefully have a decent enough job, or they're gonna be, as, as my wife will refer to, as dinks, where they're dual-income, no kids, and they're gonna sit there and figure out how to move into that place. But one car's probably not gonna cut it. I mean, the job market here is not such that, you know, the reality is, we, we may or may not lure those people, right? I think the biggest threat to the community, and I, and it's almost for Michael and the, and the shade guy, is that as we look at what's happening with development and with housing, I'm concerned that your project opens a significant door for short-term rentals. And when I look at short-term rentals, those are detractors from TOT and detractors from the hotel. And so if I was looking at that, my question to you guys is, are, when you go and you do your CCNRs, or however you envision this project, if I'm living over off of railway, I don't want short-term rentals, I don't want Airbnbs, and I don't want them undercutting the hotel. So how, how do you guys envision that cooperative working? And the second part of that is, my assumption would be that there's probably gonna be a mutual benefit agreement entered into between the hotel, there's gonna be an HOA presumptively with mixed use that's gonna be factored in at a different rate. So those residents, those 97 residents, are gonna end up picking up the cost and the burden for maintenance when there's vacancies in the commercial use. So how, how do you abate that? What's your, what's your thought process on that? And to be honest with you, I'm not, the parking is a significant concern to me. We already have challenges with the Gold Line and what their intentions are for parking, and we already have a community in that area that's gonna be negatively impacted and require parking enforcement and other things to be able to keep those people's quality of life that already live there sane. So I don't want to see this project complicate an already complicated situation. Thank you.
Right. It's a very good question. And, you know, we will protect the, the, the homeowners with the CCNRs. And, and you can do that and prohibit them from, from, from renting out their place on short-term rental, like, like what your fear is. And that's a very legitimate fear. And, and there's ways to weed out speculators and flippers and, and that sort, sort of thing, which unfortunately, the real estate industry is loaded with hustlers. But George Penner is gonna be, be in charge of the marketing, and, and we'll be very involved in screening each and every one of our homeowners.
The only thing I would add also is that the other existing homeowners don't want short-term rentals. So you already have that force working with you. You also need to think a little bit about, you know, who would have the highest probability or propensity of wanting to buy in this project. And yes, there are going to be local residents within the San Dimas area that will want to purchase, but we're also seeing a shift. We're seeing a shift, a migration of buyers who want to be in communities like yours. They don't want to be in downtown LA, two blocks from Skid Row. They don't want to be in, you know, other major metropolitan areas that lack what you have here, which is history, architecture, the fabric, the park, and neighbors that they can chat with. Now, working conditions have also significantly evolved, and so now you have a much greater flexible workforce that can come in to the office once, twice a week, perhaps never. So now you're gonna have residents who are gonna be more invested in their units at Pioneer Square, and they will act as the sort of catalyst, I think, for, you know, reducing that, that turnover propensity. You're also, the CCNRs absolutely can address that and should address that. And I think that homeowners would welcome it.
Michael, if I may, given the hour, I want to make sure you're completing your presentation, and then staff have a chance to ask specific questions regarding what you're proposing. So do you mind finishing the presentation? Staff will be able to address any questions, and then we'll open it up to the public.
We didn't really finish the residential, right? Why don't you describe?
This is an affordable, you're not gonna have retired people being able to buy it in the past.
We could go back to the, I guess, yeah, go back to the beginning of the presentation. So you've seen a lot of these images as we've been flipping through back and forth. This is to give you a little flavor of what the residential spaces may be like in the project. And again, as Michael started the presentation tonight, these are all conceptual artist renderings. These are not final designs, these are not final styles. They're a reflection of the ideals that we have for the project, how to break down the scale for articulation so they feel comfortable. I have to say, I'm proud to work at Morubel Udel. As an architecture firm, we hold the idea of place and human scale very high in our design. So we want people to go into homes or spaces, and there's a place to sit down, there's a, there's a rail that makes you feel comfortable, a balcony to sit on. And so we're trying to bring all of those things into these homes as well, so that they're not the run-of-the-mill apartments that you may see other places. As Michael explained, townhomes on the east and west side of the residential area of the project, and again, these would be... And again, these would be homes that you could walk directly into from the sidewalk. You know, you go up a couple of stairs and they're probably two or three stories. You'll have internal stairs going up to the bedrooms on the upper level. And then, we want to incorporate a lot of balconies and roof terraces as well to take advantage of the views to the mountains and to the park to the south. What you're seeing here as well are some, some of these images are older. The rendering on the right was used in September. And so, we're pairing images of our specific project with other built projects that we're not necessarily associated with, but they have also been built to address the same kind of qualities that we're looking for with this project. Another view of what the townhomes may be like, the one on the left is a rendering of our project for the townhomes on the west side facing Acacia Street. And again, this precedent image showing kind of a courtyard field, very, very comfortable to walk in. You can see sitting on the porch there or reading a book in the courtyard. Continuing with the same kind of feel, whether it's more traditional Spanish or Mediterranean style or something that is a little bit more modern, but still has those influences of California's past, is important for us to incorporate into the design. This woman up here spoke about the craftsman style, and we definitely want to lean on that for inspiration as well. That is completely a Southern California architecture style, and it has that warm wood and those warm spaces. You can sit next to a window, you can sit on the balcony and feel very comfortable while you're there. So, again, some more green and green examples, but then also just within San Dimas and where we are now, the history that you guys have here, we want to draw from that and use that as inspiration, not to replicate it and repeat it, but to draw inspiration from that. We've talked a lot about Mission Meridian.
Yeah. Go back to the wall thing.
Oh, yeah. So, this image here, you might not be familiar with it, but this is an existing brick wall on the property immediately adjacent to the skate park. And, you know, it's a brick wall, but we could use it for things such as walkways or building seats into the project. We want to reuse what's there and keep the history of the site alive. As I was saying, Mission Meridian has come up a lot tonight on one of Michael's earlier projects, which is what you're seeing on the left. And then, this is again, an older rendering of the residential building for our project. But you can see how this is not, you know, a carbon copy of a Craftsman house that was built in the 20s, but it's taken a lot of inspiration from that. The colors, the feeling, how you approach it, the scale. And this might be what the larger building, residential building on our project might look like, where you have the fronts of these buildings that are two stories overlooking the park, then stepping back to three floors with great big terraces that overlook the trees. And finally, when you're farthest away from the park, it goes up to four floors. But again, the views from up there are going to be spectacular of the park and of the mountains. Then we kind of, you know, this next group of images is all of our project, and we're going to kind of take you around the perimeter. So, here, we talked about the residential building and the townhomes here. You can see the hotel in the background, a retail building that's sitting proud. It's a little bit faint, but you can see the existing tree right there. And then, this is the edge of the park, the existing park. Again, this is an artistic rendering meant to articulate what our image might be for the project. So, the park is not represented exactly as it may be if you were standing there. But here, you can see a nice public walkway that brings you into the project, gracious stairs that are landscaped that will bring you up into the plaza, which is right behind the condominium building right there. We've seen this image a lot, but this is as you move around with the park, the intersection of the park and Cataract with the train in the background. This would be a view from Bonita and Cataract with the bookstore, ground floor retail all the way along here. So, as you're walking from, you know, the east side of the downtown area to the west side of the downtown area, you're passing all of these glass storefronts, looking inside, seeing what's going on. And then, we have the residential buildings above, which will help activate the plaza and the project altogether. And then, this is a view looking from Acacia. You remember that the parking entrance was off of Acacia, so that's the entrance to the garage there. And here, you can see some of the hotel amenity space, a gracious stair that comes up to the north of this central retail building. This could be a great restaurant or a boutique jewel box retail sort of store. The townhomes along Acacia Street, the other stair that connects you down to the park over here, the hotel rooftop that we're all excited about, the restaurants that the hotel is bringing. And then, we've got this activated plaza all the way through here, you know, a little kid's fountain with lots of residential units that look down into that activated plaza, a stage for performances or movie nights. All kinds of things can happen in here. And along the south edge, you can also see where we're stepping this building back. So, again, just two stories at the face of the park and then stepping back to three and then up to four when you're at the inside, the internal portions of our project. So, that was, again, an artistic rendering and artist interpretation of what the project may look like. We're in very early conceptual design stages, and these things will change, but they are showing the heart and the goals and the desire that we have of what this project can be.
Okay, go back to the comparison.
Uh huh.
So, yeah.
Okay. So, here we have the comparison between 2019, '21 and '22 with the oak tree. Originally, it was in place, and then we moved it to Pioneer Park, and now it's back in place again. And I think it really has become an asset to the project. 2019, the fire access was completely unresolved at that point. You saw all of the scattering of buildings across there, there was no way for a fire truck to get there. In '21, we really built the project out and we needed an encroachment on Pioneer Park to get fire access. And now, where we are is we have, we've provided that fire access on our site so the park can stay exactly as it is. Park access has always been important. In 2019, there were lots of connections through the project. '21, the only way to get from the plaza to the park was to go back out to the side streets and the sidewalks on either side. And now, I think you've seen that we have a number of different ways that you could very beautifully connect between the plaza and the park. Building height in 2019 was two to three stories at the park. '21 was three and four floors above a parking podium, so we were going up to 65 to 70 feet. And now, we've brought that back down to two to three floors at the park, which again, steps back up as you go farther away. I think the four-story portion of that residential building is 100 feet from the edge of the park, so it's quite a ways back. The overall building height, similar, it was, you know, residential 38, 35, hotel 45 to 50. That jumped up quite a bit in '21, and now we're back in a similar range for '22. And as we've talked multiple times tonight about the open space, the public realm that we're providing, we've always been in the range of 50 to 55% open space, where we are now, 55% of the site is open, accessible to the public to walk around. That includes the plaza, the park connections, the courtyards, all of those things. Areas, this is a little bit more the nuts and bolts and numbers. Ground floor commercial has always generally been in the same range, 26, 25 and 30,000 square feet. Upper-level flex, Jerry explained that that used to be those upper-level dentists or hair salons, and that has been converted to the residential area. We've talked about the hotel and providing the amenity space of what a boutique hotel really needs to be successful. And I have to say, I feel like the rooftop bar on the hotel is the number one amenity that everybody loves here. So, that's the hotel. And then, the residential portion has gone from 60, more than doubled to 140, and now back down to 128. So, again, we've talked about the number of living spaces, hotel rooms and parking spaces. And I think there's one more slide that I think Michael probably wants to talk about. But there's a lot of economic impact as well.
Yeah. Yeah, this is important, I think, to the city leaders. This is the number of jobs that this project will provide, over probably around 1,000 construction jobs, 130 permanent jobs. And then, it's going to, in terms of tax revenue for the city, $350,000 annually. And when you factor it in over the next 10-year period, it'd be about $4 million in tax revenue for this, additional tax revenue for the city of San Dimas. So, that concludes our presentation, and council members and staff were prepared to talk further. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael, to you and your team. We appreciate it. As I said at the beginning, we're very excited about this project. Let me go back to the beginning. A request for proposal was put out and submissions made back in 2019, and the city selected the PSQ project because of what it brought to the essence of the community in the downtown. And as any development project, it iteratively develops over time and it changes, and finances are a part of that equation. And so, here, it's really a public-private partnership. And so, there's something the city needs for the community, and there's something the developer needs to make this financially a viable project. I mean, the bottom line is not just the product, it's also a return on the investment for the developers. So, we're not kidding ourselves. I mean, there's money to be made, otherwise you wouldn't be doing the project, right? And we want to have the highest-quality project that fits the community, and that's where this partnership actually works. When I arrived in January of 2021, coming in in the middle of this project, we saw this evolve, and it evolved to what we saw in 2021 in September, and we were close. I mean, we had more details laid out for what we were trying to accomplish, and we were developing agreements as a city with PSQ. But what came up is a concern about the level of transparency and accountability for the public. And so, for all this time, the public hadn't seen what was happening, what's going on with the project. And while I may have been involved with a lot of developments in a number of different cities that are far larger in developments than this, what I may perceive as the right fit isn't necessarily what anybody else in the room would think it is. And the ultimate decision is really the councils with the input coming from the public. And so, we wanted to make sure we had this project fully articulated. So, what you saw today was something that is a new version of what we had that's only now a week old. And so, while we know things are conceptual and that things will evolve over time, there's a number of areas that we want to make sure that are solidified. Concerns that came up, and I've heard it tonight, was housing density. And while we understand that that's the component that's funding the remaining parts of the development, there is a concern with the number of housing units and what's the right mix, and is it 97, is it 100, is it 60, is it 40, what's that fit? It's something we have to grapple with. Parking is probably a very extreme, in my mind, example. We already know the downtown-specific plan is going to require parking, Gold Line is going to require parking, these type of projects are going to require parking, so we have to be very careful in terms of parking, because if we underpark a project, you're going to get negative impacts all around, and you're going to be trading off good-quality developments in other parts of the downtown to add parking to make up for the deficiencies we made in previous projects. We want to be careful about that. We also have to acknowledge that this project is far in advance of the downtown-specific plan. The downtown-specific plan was intended to properly plan the entire downtown core, gather a significant amount of public input, discussion with the council, visioning for what we want to see the city over the next 20, 30, 50 years. And in that vision, we would be developing height standards, zoning requirements, all these other provisions that would lock in the type of project that we wanted in the specific areas. And so, here, what we're doing is really innovative, considering that we don't have that, and we're trying to find the best mix of a project that financially works that still gives the essence of what the city needs. And so, I want to ask the two staff members next to me, Brad and Henry, did we address all the issues and questions that we had, or do we have, do we need more clarity now? Or is it something we can work through when we're negotiating? Okay. So, it sounds like, Michael, you hit all the areas that we wanted hit for the public. And so, I'll turn this to the council for any questions, and then we can open it up for the oral communications. I will note that there's been a request that we, I asked that we table the closed session or, I'm losing the word.
Continue.
Continue the closed session to prior to the council, the next council meeting, so that this meeting would continue, so that we can actually talk about this when we're fresh, as opposed to talk here in the evening to get direction from.
Are you as tired as we are?
You did all the heavy lifting, so we're probably not as tired as you are, but I want to make sure we give this the due diligence that it needs to have, because it's an important project.
Mayor, I guess, perhaps go down the line and then we can make our comments? Okay.
Ryan?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Chris, for that. Sorry, Michael, I was in the hospital unexpectedly today and I had an emergency procedure, so I am, I told my wife against better judgment, this was important, I wanted to be here for this, so forgive me for that. You know, this project, I think, there's a lot of good things.
I want to commend you and your team for the transparency, be able to be here and talk about this. When we discussed this, I envisioned it as almost like a Senate hearing if we were going to have to go through this and elicit information, but instead, you guys pulled through, and I appreciate that. I think you're very transparent to the public about what the project was when it was proposed, what it evolved to be and where we're at now. Admittedly, in 2021, you know, I'm not sure if staff shared the comment, but I had said the project lost its way. And I think that the density, the way it was proposed, had just become grandiose, and I had a lot of concern. One year, I lived in downtown LA in the financial district, and so, I'm used to walkability. I'm used to going from my loft and going down to Seventh and Flower and traveling all throughout LA. But when I looked at this, at some point, I looked and I remembered off of Spring Street, the Rowan Building that towers over a little pocket park, and I became concerned about that. I became concerned about how the park interfaces to the project and the complementing, the exchange between, the synergy at the beginning when we started this adventure together, I think was exciting, and I think there's a lot of opportunity. Then, we went through some iterations, I think, where we're at today. I applaud all of you, and I applaud you for taking a step back, looking at this and hearing the council's concerns, the community's concerns here today, and I thank you for that. The one thing that I think is interesting is, you know, as we talk about it, we talk about it conceptually, but, you know, for everyone's knowledge, at some point, this will actually become a project. There'll be an application, we're going to go through public hearings on all the specifics, and we haven't even started talking about all the finer details like conditional use permits and what time, you know, and those are the things that will follow, right? I mean, the rooftop bar, who's going to be okay with the DJ up there on a Saturday night, you know, and how that impacts the neighboring community and stuff like that, or how the parking, you know, is going to work in a very practical sense, you know? So, I just want to say that I greatly appreciate, you know, those things will sort themselves out. But I do think that what you guys have demonstrated today and the transparency that you've brought, I think, is very helpful in helping the council and all of us together move forward in the right direction. So, the issue about the short-term rentals, I have great concern about, both for the viability of the hotel, and that's another issue that I think I intended to bring forward to council. We've not had short-term rental issues traditionally, but recently, there's five short-term rentals in the community. I don't think we're capturing transit occupancy tax on short-term rentals, and they're undercutting our local hotels. And so, you know, as that emerges, this project has a very sexy feel to it. to it. And anyone who wants to invest and fire up an Airbnb for the destination that this could be, would be a very attractive proposition, especially to the people who look at a single-bedroom type of place and say, hey, yeah, I'll furnish that and put it up for, you're going to be at 195, they're going to put it up at 190, and feel they get that experience. So I want to make sure the hotel's set up for success. I want to make sure the community's set up for success. But thank you for engaging the community. You've done a very outstanding job. And I want to say that publicly throughout this entire process, from the beginning to where we're at today. I don't think that falls deaf on anyone. And the project's, the feel, the theme, you know, has gone through it. As far as moving forward, I look forward to continuing to work with you guys. And thank you so much for considering us, because the one point, yes, for everyone to understand is, the city owns the property. We're going to sell the property. But, you know, we get a lot of blame. People think, we put Popeyes in there, and it's private equity, you know, it's private capital that makes these things happen. And you guys responded to this. You see an opportunity. You have vision. You have creativity. You're risk takers in every which way, depending on what seat you're in. So thank you for that.
I want to thank you very much. I think you did an excellent job. I liked the project that you presented to us. The bottom line is that the residential is necessary for it to pencil out. And I think that's what most people object to, is the residential. But it's, I think you presented us with information that...
Hello, sir.
That the residential is necessary for the project to pencil out. I'm very happy that you saved the tree. And I think that's important for the community. It may seem strange to you, but it's a very significant tree in the community. The one problem I do, I'm very concerned about, is the parking. And I think we have to closely look at that, because I think you may have a parking problem. But overall, I think the project is good. And I look forward to seeing it evolve even further. Thank you very much.
Eric? I've got a few things. One is kind of more of a comment slash question. And that is that I'm kind of concerned when we're talking about the commercial having now residential on top of it. And I am no commercial expert, but I think in the past, what we've seen in projects in our city and nearby, when we throw residential on top of commercial, is that the commercial space shrinks a little bit. You don't have big, high ceilings. You don't have as big a commercial space. And it doesn't attract the same type of tenants that a much larger standalone type of place would. So I guess my question and challenge is, how is it that we attract, you know, being that now with this current iteration, we have housing on top of these commercial units, and some of the more larger tenants, how is it that we attract those types of commercial businesses that we're really looking to grab? What I would hate to do is to go through this whole project, stand everything up, and then cut the ribbon and have, you know, a few more hair salons and, you know, dentist office and yoga studio, and just the stuff that we already have in our current downtown. I think this is a...
Leave yoga alone, Eric.
This is a fantastic opportunity to provide some accessory-type of businesses to those that already exist in our downtown.
All the ground-floor commercial floor plates will be standard, generally 14-foot, may vary from 12 to 15 feet, but will be 12 to 15-foot clear. So that'll meet, you know, most, I mean, we're not going to attract a big-box store that needs 20-foot ceiling.
Sure, sure.
But I think ceiling height won't be an impediment. I mean, we're not going to, the type, there are retailers that will not go into mixed-use, even with anything above them, not necessarily residential, just even if there was offices above them. But we're not looking for those those types of more, you know, corporate, you know, restaurant and retail tenants.
Sure.
We do, we do have to pre-plan for hood shafts, obviously. We have to pre-plan for back-of-house, especially for restaurants. And frankly, that gets a little bit more complicated with residential versus office, just in terms of, with what's above you, obviously. Just in terms of heightened sensitivity to noise and smells. So that is an issue we have to address. But I don't see, you know, most of our properties have residential on top of retail. So most of that is rental rental housing and not for-sale housing. So again, there's kind of heightened sensitivity there when it's your home versus your apartment.
Sure.
And the other projects we're working on also have, all of them have housing over retail. In Redlands and Clermont, and other projects that Aaron is working on, I mean, it's pretty much every infill TOD site. So anyway, so I mean, we're very, we're sensitive to that issue. And we've got to lease up the retail, which is, and we don't want to make it even more complicated by having upper housing.
So the other things that I kind of wanted to touch on, I absolutely agree with you that there is, I think this could be a big draw for people that are currently living in like a major metropolitan area, and want to come to a city like San Dimas. And I can't blame them, because it's fantastic here. And who wouldn't want to live in a city like San Dimas, that's that small-bedroom community, and have amenities like this close by? But I think throughout this entire process, my my chief concern was that I wanted to make sure that when they come to a place like San Dimas to move here into the housing that's going to be available, is that it's still San Dimas. It's not a Pasadena East, you know? And I think the second iteration of this really got to the area of Pasadena East. Like, this is real big, and this, you know, wow, holy cow, this, I'm not sure if this quite fits. But I think this this new proposal you brought to us balances a lot of things really well. The height was a huge concern for me when we're talking, you know, 65, 70 feet. And for it to be brought down to where it's at now, I feel certainly a lot more comfortable with that, and I thank you for that. And just so you know, my concerns, where they're coming from as far as building size and and developments, all we need to do is drive west a little bit into Glendora. And there are some developments in there that were built right up on the sidewalk, you know, utilize every square inch of space that was on that property, and is super tall. And that, Glendora as a community is very similar to San Dimas, in the way that we feel. And I would just hate to look back on this, like Chris was saying, 50 years from now, and say, holy cow, what did we do? And that's why I'm really grateful that we're able to massage this and work the balance a little bit more, because that's, that would be the worst thing that I could ever imagine, is getting this in and then ending up with, you know, zero clearance, no setbacks, stuff that we've got going on in neighboring cities. I would have to agree with somebody's comment earlier, that I feel like the 2019 iteration of the architecture, and I realize this is fluid, and this is, you know, a work in progress. It had more of the San Dimas feel to it when it embodied a lot more masonry-type of construction. I'm not certain that that the mid-century modern thing does anything for me. It sticks out like a sore thumb, in my opinion. Again, I'm not the the expert in architecture or financing a project like this, so I have no idea if it has something to do with the viability of financials, building materials, different types of finishes do cost different, you know, amounts of money. So looking back at that previous iteration, it was more of that, it blended into our downtown, I think, is what I'm getting at. You drive from here west on Benita, and you're going to drive by a lot of different masonry buildings. They aren't exactly similar. They do, they do differ. There are different textures. But but it has a certain feel that I think we kind of lost a little bit here. I do appreciate the craftsman-style architecture. I think that would be a good fit. But some of the other mid-century type of Spanish, Mediterranean, I'm just not 100% sold on. But again, I appreciate that it's a work in progress, and that we still got a lot of work to do before we get to anywhere. And the concern that I had chiefly with the second iteration and the fire access on Pioneer Park, I think the important part to me was that these two amenities, being the park and Pioneer Square, have different access points. Because, you know, I take my son to T-ball practice and basketball practice at Pioneer Park all the time, and I use that that driveway there. And while it's very rough, it's very undeveloped, it's, you know, dirt, the asphalt that is there is horrible. But the one thing that I don't want some, you know, soccer mom or T-ball mom to have to do is wait in traffic on a Saturday morning to park at the park to bring their kids to T-ball or something. So I think the separate entrances really do help a lot. Integrating them in pedestrian access, I think, is the way to go. The vehicular access, not so much. And I think this really is an opportunity for us as a city to use this as an opportunity to, you know, enhance the park's entrance there and make it, because that's now going to be the sore thumb, once this project gets built, is going to be that particular part of the park. And I'd really like to see that, you know, us prioritize developing that a little bit more to make it more cohesive and a really nice, attractive parking lot, instead of split-rail fencing and dirt. And I think that's about it. Again, I'm a huge fan of the conference rooms and the hotel. From what I've seen, and again, we're talking different cities, you know, we're, San Dimas on the very eastern edge of LA County. And and the hotels that I've done some talking to with are in Orange County, kind of in the heart of, you know, very business-centered areas. But from talking to some hotel operators, it has been the case, down there at least, that midweek was actually the busier time, because they've marketed so much to the business community and the business meeting type of use, that midweek was more expensive than the weekends. And the weekends was trying to attract, you know, the people from from neighboring communities that wanted a staycation or something like that. So I think that really hit the nail on the head with with the usage for the hotel. So I really do look forward to seeing more out of that. And frankly, for the whole project, because it's been a long road to get here. And I think you guys have put in a lot of work into this. So I certainly appreciate it. I appreciate you guys being here today and hearing everybody out, us and the community included. So thank you.
Thank you, Council. My wife agrees with you on the architecture, by the way.
Well, that's good to hear. You know, the one thing that I want to say is, I want to thank the community. We've been saying, thank you very much for doing this and staying alive and keeping it going. But the reality is, you have a product you're trying to trying to sell. So that I, I understand it. But I want to thank the community who came out, people who, you know, sent emails and text messages and with their opinions, okay? So this process doesn't work without that type of communications back and forth. As was said earlier by Mrs. Gonzalez, this project probably would not even be talked about if Ryan and a few people in the audience hadn't, you know, dragged me by the ear and say, you need to listen, you need to listen. Otherwise, there'd been a Marriott Hotel over there. And the reality is, it's not there. And we are in this this process. And with that all being said, I want to thank those people that, you know, reached out and convinced me to pay a little more attention. So thank you very much. Now, Michael, I want to thank you and your group. You heard us. You heard what's going on. There's still some questions. And obviously, we'll have to work through some of those. The tree, the tree is there. And that's what was a big, big question two weeks ago, was that tree going to be there? I heard all kinds of stories. We're going to drop it into a into a well. Then I heard we were going to move it to the park, which would have created a bigger problem. We wouldn't be able to use the parking area there. We needed to make it larger. And the reality is, does the tree survive, you know, in 10 years? So, you know, you guys coming back and saying, we can work around this tree. But that's originally what you said you could do, and we got back to that. So thank you. Thank you very much. As I said, I've received several phone calls today. People were very happy with the hotel situation. They talked about it a lot. They were very concerned about the 97 units that are there. And I'm sure that conversation will be brought along a little more between between the staff and you guys. One of the things that we talked about was transparency. I thank you for reaching out to the community. You've had several meetings, and that did well. Unfortunately, the way government is, we couldn't reach out to a lot of people because of closed sessions and things like that. We couldn't discuss, because as we progress through this stuff, it also talks about financials and things like that and property sales. So the reality is, you guys were our arm in getting this out to the public, and we do, we do want to thank you very much. But with that all being said, you guys had to be here tonight because you want this project to go forward. So thank you, guys. And thank your wife for letting you come, because I've seen you many times. I never knew who Michael was. I didn't know who Mr. Tessier was. I knew none of these people. But yep, I read things about him. So but thank you very much. As Chris said earlier, we are going to continue the closed session to the meeting an hour before, or maybe even longer, I'm not sure what that be. We'll make notification of it. But before the next council meeting, so we can get this done, and we can get Councilman Vienna home to bed where he should be, and before his wife throws any more darts at me. So the reality is, if anybody has anything else, we are actually going to have an open, open mic. So if you would like to come up and say what you want to say, and we're here as long as you got something to say.
You got it, Chris. Got it. One, I want to thank council, the city, for giving the community this opportunity. And again, for the Pioneer Square group to actually reach out, because I am a resident for 20 years. I worked in San Dimas for eight. I left because we didn't have this kind of opportunity in our city. I couldn't host my guests at a nice hotel, which would be cheaper than, you know, 15 or 2,000 square feet of a tilt-up building. That's what San Dimas is. And, you know, I've heard what people have said. I know the houses that are being built here are Mediterranean. Some of them are mixed between, I think, contemporary or the craftsman look that San Dimas. This is a huge window into the future of what our city could be, you know? And I'm very familiar. I don't know most of the table over there, but I know Jerry Tessier, guys. His family built the charter school in Pomona. His family built the Fox Theater as well. I've seen the packing house in Clermont. I've always been jealous of having to go to these other cities to host my clients and spend my money. I've never spent my money in San Dimas, ever. I am so excited to have single-bedroom, two-bedroom. I mean, most of the houses that are built here are million-dollar homes now because of the rate of how everything's inclined. I think this is actually going to attract the type of people who are be conscious about our community, conscious about, I've not seen a whole lot about the green projects and LEED, and I don't see solar up there. I didn't hear anything about the programming in Pioneer Square. That's what's important. If you guys got a canvas, you got to paint it. So I know this community right here and all these people, because obviously, I think they're our community members here who have seen this project spoken about from the beginning till now. I'm glad, thank you, for getting it here, because I'm going to go get 200 more citizens that are here from San Dimas that want to bring their businesses here, that can't afford, you know, maybe 2,000 square feet. But to have a work-liv-lot space, guys, that balance that you're talking about is everything that I think could be, like I said, more about the future of what's going on in San Dimas. And I think that we've been sensitive to the past, but it's important to understand that, you know, my kids don't even want to get their driver's licenses anymore. There aren't going to be cars. You know, that gold line is important to this city. It's going to allow, I mean, we're 30 minutes from IE, 30 minutes from OC, 30 minutes from LA. That's what I tell people why I live in San Dimas. It's very convenient. And that gold line coming in will be fantastic. I don't know that you knew that that... I don't know that you knew that that was coming because I didn't know until the construction started and I started hearing things, but nonetheless, bravo to a team that was willing to listen. And thank God we have a really good city council that's going to listen to its citizens and let me know when the next meeting is because I'll have this written back, I promise. Thank you.
You know, growth doesn't happen without changes. And when you see how well Clermont happened, it's because they have to do some changes. I had the opportunity, San Dimas gave me the opportunity to have a residential commercial building. I've been there for 10 years, the place has been open eight years, and it's been such a wonderful business for me. And people come and they sit down and they talk about the trees, how beautiful San Dimas is, and I think we need more opportunity for business like this. And I think this will bring that, you know, a more person-to-person business. And so I'm totally, totally for this. And you gentlemen are great artists and we're lucky to have you. And thank you. If this happened, that would be a wonderful thing for the city.
Sorry, I didn't want to be all negative. I just want to thank the council members. I loved everything every one of you said. I feel like you've listened to the community very well and you have the same opinions as we do. And I really want to thank you for your transparency. Like you really showed us what you're planning and from what we saw tonight, you've been listening to the community and the council members. There's been many changes. You've already invested in this project a lot. So I didn't mean to beat anybody up, as Lacey said, but parking, I just want to leave, you need to make money on the project and you're right, the residential is going to be that. But you're also, just no, you still have risk there, okay? Obviously. The parking is a problem. We didn't even talk about the employees that need to park there. So I just want to know, I mean, I live up in Villa Verde, so I need to drive still mostly and I want a place to park, so just please put more consideration into that and just thank you all, okay?
Hello, Isabel from West Fourth Street. I actually had a quick question for staff before I go into my comments, but, you know, I've heard because this is government-owned property and it's associated with redevelopment, is there a deadline for when this property has to be sold, otherwise it may be turned over to the state? Is that just rumors that I've heard or are there actual deadlines about that?
Jeff, do you want to take this question?
I think the deadline that you're talking about is pursuant to the Surplus Lands Act and we are facing that deadline. It's an obstacle that we have. There's a December 31st, 2022 deadline to sell this property in order to avoid having to comply with the Surplus Lands Act. And if we have to comply with the Surplus Lands Act, that means that before we sell the property to anyone, including PSQ, we would need to advertise the property to affordable housing and open space nonprofit agencies and developers and determine if they'd be interested in the property. So we are working around or trying to work with complying with that deadline under the Surplus Lands Act.
Okay, thank you. I heard rumors that I never really knew what the actual date was, so thank you for clarifying that. So my comments are, first, I just want to say thank you to everyone here, the community, the council, the PSQ team. As a lot of people said, it has taken us a long time to get here. I think it's been over two years since the Fairfield Inn was on the table. And I just think that this is a beautiful, you know, culmination of people coming together and working on a project, you know, having proposals and having some critical feedback and coming back with something. I think, you know, when the Fairfield Inn was proposed, I think the community was loud and clear that we didn't want a big boxy hotel right in the middle of downtown and the council listened. And now we are, you know, presented with a very dynamic project that, you know, serves the council and the city with the hotel and the transit occupancy tax. You know, obviously the developers have the residential to make the finances work out and the community is getting a great community and retail opportunity here as well. So I guess what I just want to point out is that, you know, for the folks that have concerns, I mean, I think it's valid to bring up the concerns about parking, the concerns about the number of residential units, but I think we also have to be realistic about all of the possibilities that, you know, that are out there and what it has taken to get here. You know, if it wasn't this, it would have been the Fairfield Inn. If we don't go with this project, is there enough time to come up with another proposal by the December 2022 deadline? Who knows, probably not. And so I think this is just a really, I don't know, I think kind of like a perfect compromise for all the parties involved in a win-win-win. And I just want to say that, you know, I grovel to the council to say, "Please," you know, "As citizens and voters in the city, like, we are excited about this. Like, please bring Pioneer Square to our community and let's have something that the whole community can get behind and bring folks together and let's build it." Thank you.
Elsie Skinner here. I just want to tell you guys, I've lived in this town 47 years. We've waited a long time for Pioneer Square. I think this is really exciting. I applaud all of you for a great job. And I happen to live in a house in town that's 4,000 square feet that's all cedar, so I'm not Mediterranean either, just in case you were wondering. So I agree with that, that it needs to lend itself to who we are here in San Dimas. I want to thank the staff and the council for being so open-minded and for being the driving force that this is going to happen and to the community. Bless our San Dimas community because we all live here because we want to, we don't live here because we have to. My 12-year-old grandson told me, and I think he shared it with Emmett a year ago, "We have a skate park there." He really thinks there needs to be a store there that sells skateboards. Just thought I'd tell you that. Thank you.
Okay. Let me see, I'm going to pull up my notes. A little bit behind, I'm using your online streaming because I can't hear inside this room. So I do want to also kind of echo what other residents have said. So I've also been, I was part of the No Big Hotel. I got a knock on my door and they're like, "Oh, did you know there's a hotel going in?" And I was like, "Wait, what?" Because prior to that, the construction company was originally also going to be sold for a townhouse development. Again, residents broke up and were like, "We don't need that right here, you know, put it somewhere else." Obviously, this lot has been empty for quite a while. I've lived here for a little bit over 11 years. It's been empty the whole time I've been here, to my knowledge. So of course, I do frequent the Pioneer Park even prior to having children. My husband and I would walk over to the park, go hang out, you know, sometimes we would bring a picnic and just set out. It's actually a really nice park. So I know I had mentioned the Mediterranean thing and I'm sorry, I don't mean to also like beat you up on that or anything, that's not the intent, just more to kind of say that as a resident, like, if it's going to be Mediterranean, it's going to be Mediterranean. I'm still happy to have the plaza at this point because one of the things when I moved here 11 years ago, and I moved from High Sienna Heights, so it's a little bit busier than it is here, but it's not like downtown. We were actually originally going to move to Glendale and we were going to buy a loft in the Americana. That was our original plan. We switched out, we found a house with a really big property, a really nice, okay, well, for LA Sandor, a big backyard. It doesn't compete with Alta's property, but her property's gorgeous. I wish, I wish I could find that. And we went for it. We went all in and we're like, "We definitely like this more." So when I say that what I loved was kind of that craftsman style, and I want to remind residents, we actually do have, I believe it's three, I don't think it's four stories, the Avalon that is behind Butter. There's a whole community there that is already set up, so if you kind of want to see how that height difference will kind of play in, just go check that in. When I drive by, I don't really notice it as much, even when it was kind of, when that plaza there was being redeveloped. So if you kind of want to see how that height difference plays in, that's a really good example. My biggest concern is going to be parking. With the city moving the gold line parking to the Foothill Transit current lot right now, the Park and Ride, I know a lot of residents that live right next to that. I don't happen to live right next to it, I'm across Bonita. We're really concerned about the overflow. So I think some of the concern is just, again, I know you guys are trying to aim towards one-car household, but in LA, I just don't see, and especially this far east, I just don't see that being as possible as compared to, say, Glendale. In Glendale, I can 100% see my husband and I only owning one car, even with kids, just because it's so centered around a hub. But even with the gold line, again, there's just that one gold line, so the reliability of being able to access so many other places is going to be difficult. So parking is a little bit of a concern. I would love to see if we could increase it. I don't know if it's possible. From, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a mathematician, so I don't know if it's possible. From the numbers, I do see we have increased it already from the original plan. The middle plan had the most, but the original plan didn't have nearly as much parking as we do now. I also, again, part of why I mentioned the Americana, that is such a desirable area. Those lofts sell like hot cake. A lot of people love the idea of living above retail and being able to just run downstairs, go grab a coffee and then go back, or just run downstairs, sit at a table in front of their favorite restaurant or something, or go have a date night and they can walk to it. You know, it is desirable, so I hope we can look into like a loft style rather than maybe condos above the retail. Because that particular style is very popular right now, especially among younger families. I mean, I know, Mr. Vienna, you actually live above the mixed retail and those houses there also actually sold pretty quick from what I remember when they were selling. And now when one goes on sale, it sells quick. So there is a desire to live in a mixed use. So I know there is a lot of talk about that. Something I would also like to see is somebody that walks from across Bonita, and I don't know if this would be PSQ, if it would be City, if it would be Gold Line, because it has to do with that whole Bonita intersection, which is currently all a big mess. I would love to see a more bike-friendly Bonita Avenue. Currently, it is not that, it is so far from that. Most of the bicyclists will absolutely avoid Bonita because it's just, you can't get by there without drivers possibly hitting you, especially going through the downtown core. It's just very difficult. So I'm hoping to see bike lane, wide sidewalks for parents that are pushing strollers or people that want to access with wheelchairs. I have one question about parking. For the parking, is there going to be multiple elevators going up? Or is it just going to be one? Is that not decided yet?
Yeah, there'd be a separate elevator for the commercial uses to get up to the plaza level and then the residential would have their own dedicated elevators.
Okay. Because I noticed the way you have the design set up for the parking, especially in regards to where we're separating residential and the guest parking, I'm just like wondering how they're going to like do that trek of dropping off, bringing their groceries up to their house? Because they, I'm assuming except for the side, and I don't even know if the side townhomes have a garage?
They do, yeah. The ones on Acacia have garages. The ones on Cataract, there's five of them there.
Yeah, so that, I guess that would be something I would be concerned as if I were like to potentially buy. That would kind of be something I wouldn't like as much of having to go up and then have to trek up a little bit more. But either way, I'm very pro PSQ. I really do think we need it. It's great for our community. It brings in business, and outside business too, not just for residents, but also outsiders. So thank you guys so much for pushing this and thank you, City, for helping push this and also get this working, not only for residents, but for businesses as well that are hoping to get in. So, sorry I took that too long. Thank you.
Hi, City staff, City Council and members of the Pioneer Square Development Team. I just want to express my support for the project. I think I really appreciate that it shows that you guys have taken City staff's feedback and community feedback. I especially appreciate the new plans updated showing that we're keeping the heritage oak tree maintained and in place because I think that's a beautiful tree and I think it will be a big asset to the project as well. I just want to say again, I appreciate your patience throughout all of the development reiterations and the multiple presentations you've given us. I hope that you guys will continue to receive community input, especially regarding the aesthetics of the hotel and the townhomes and regarding the accessibility. And to City staff too, I hope we consider carefully like what we do to Bonita going forward, whether we make it like a one-lane only street like the development team suggested or if we want to add parking there on Bonita. All right, thank you, everyone.
Hi, my name is Eric Nikano and I wanted to speak out in favor of the project. I want to compliment and congratulate everybody who was involved and who played a major role in bringing it forward. As someone who grew up in San Dimas and moved to a bunch of different cities, having recently lived in San Francisco and moving back here, I love the fact that you captured the essence of what San Dimas could be without losing sight of what it is. And so I really appreciate and compliment the thought that you had put in jad into your design and thinking through all the different architectural styles and bringing that into fruition in a relatively small space. It was really excellent work. I only have one question and this is a question I think that I, as well as other residents have, would love to learn over time, once the project gets moving, what businesses will be moving in? I think all of us are very curious to hear what types of restaurants, shops, other places might be a part of Pioneer Square and we look forward to some sort of a mechanism to sharing that as businesses express an interest and eventually decide to move toward completion of sale or agreement of some sort. So thank you again for your time, for your thoughtfulness, to the City Council, to the staff and to the community members. I know, Isabel, you led this project and I really want to call out your leadership here and thank you all for really wanting to make San Dimas a better place and bringing it just right to the edge when it's just about to happen.
It's been a long three hours, but really exciting to hear all the various ideas on both sides of the room. I'm a future resident of San Dimas. I rented in South Pasadena. I own in Clermont and I'll be coming here soon and I look forward to be able to walk to something like this. And, you know, there's change happening all over LA County. People are coming east. A lot of my coworkers are moving to Glendora, to San Dimas. So I think this is something that, from a lifestyle standpoint, people like me that work in entertainment, you know, there's just so much potential. So I'm just really grateful that something like this is going to be available in my future hometown. Thank you.
Just realized how long I've been sitting. I just want to thank you all for being so open to hearing what community and what our council is concerned about in terms of building in our city. I am really excited about this project. I think it'll be wonderful for San Dimas. I think bringing in new residents will also bring more people to spend their money in San Dimas as well. And I also, I have to agree about the hotel. I think it's not so much the Mediterranean style of it, it's the color it is. It's so white and it just, it's like a big iceberg. style of it, it's the color it is, it's so white, and it just, it's like a big iceberg, you know, standing up, you know, in our city, and I, I don't think that really blends well with, with how our city is to begin with. The other thing I wanted to say is I hope that the community can be involved in what businesses are chosen to come into the retail area, because the more input you have from the community about what we want, the, the more successful the businesses will be. And I think an ice cream shop is a great idea, I think that really should be number one on the list. The other thing I wanted to say is that I think you should really look at the square footage of the rooftop bar, because I think it's gonna need to be bigger, because I think that's what everybody wants to go do. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to say? We'll, we'll go ahead and adjourn this gathering, and we'll reconvene.
We'll, we'll continue this meeting to preferably five o'clock at the next, at March eight, council meeting five-thirty, if that's not workable.
Okay, let's go five o'clock, so we have time, but it is a closed session, meeting.
Correct.
All right, anybody wants to pipe in?
Can I just thank the council and staff for your diligence, and it's what I, I started the meeting off about talking about process, and it's the democratic process which we've been engaged in for several years with the community and you and staff, and, and that has paid off. It is a classic example of cooperation and input, and we like to think of ourselves as listeners, and we've learned from all of you, and that's why we want to deliver the finest project that's ever been built here in Pasadena. Thank you for your patience and for, what did I say? Can I go home now? Yeah, let's get the towns right, okay? Sorry about that, but anyway, thank you and good night.
Okay, just in case nobody knows it, most of us will be getting up in the morning before Michael gets home. He lives on the other side of the world. Thanks, Mike.